So, welcome to this evening's city council meeting of May 11th, 2021. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such that a person meeting in this of this such that and in a in-person meeting of the city council, oh my god, I'm so tongue-tister, is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to this meeting in real time and participate when necessary. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be held by roll call vote. So if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use these either of these during oral communications and during the public hearing to request to speak. So in attendance this evening, I'm going to ask everybody to mute themselves, please, until we get to a proper time to speak. So this evening, we have in no particular order. I'm going to go from my top left, left to my bottom right. We have Councilor McCarthy, we have myself, Councilor LeBlanc, we have Councilor Pat, Councilor Gilman, Councilor Nolan, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor Cox, Councilor O'Hara, and Councilor Memhard is not with us this night, this evening. Also in attendance, we have our city clerk, John Cinos. We have our CFO, John Dunn. We have our Max, I apologize. I don't know your proper title, but we have the one of our health directors, Max Schenk. And we have our collective committees, Sherry Carvallis. And we have our assistant to the CAO, Chris Sicarenza. All right, so before we get started, Max, may I have your proper title, please? So I don't do this again.
Sure, can you hear me okay? Okay, it's assistant director.
Assistant director, I knew that. I just wanted to make, I don't want to flood that.
All right, great. No worries, thank you.
No problem, thanks, Kyle, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
First order of business is oral communications.
All right, so before we start oral communications, we have 14 people as panelists and we have 15 people as attendees. So during oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall allow complaints as to individual performance. So would anybody like to speak under oral communications? Once again, if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. And if you are watching on a device or a computer, there is a raise hand button to recognize to speak for oral communications, anyone? Okay. So we do have a caller, last four digits, seven, two, six, two. Can you hear me? Hello caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, it's Bob Roland, 18 Marina Drive.
Hey, Bob, how are you?
Very good, how you doing, Steve?
Good, nice to hear from you. What's going on?
Couple of thoughts and concerns, I think you'll hear from other people on Marina Drive. As far as the condition of the sidewalks, Marina Drive, we've seen and I've seen adults trip, slip, fall. I've seen kids going to the bus stop at the bottom of Marina Drive. Sections of Marina Drive sidewalks really need to be addressed from a safety concern. Number two, Briar Neck parking for Good Harbor Beach. There are 26, so used to be 26 parking spaces at Briar Neck for the residents. Over the past two, maybe three summer seasons, it's been taken over by a private, and I think it's on the agenda tonight, privately taken over with construction vehicles that has eliminated all parking for residents. I know it's an election year, these, my concerns are all based on residents, and I think the Briar Neck should be opened up. Obviously, it's going to come around in a short order here as far as the beach parking for the residents. Number three, finally, Wingasheak resident parking to the right of the parking area where most residents park at Wingasheak Beach. It's a wide area where I, I know DPW trucks do go on the beach from that section, but there's room for a boardwalk. We have boardwalks, three boardwalks at Wingasheak for non-residents, but the access for residents to the right at Wingasheak does not have any boardwalk, and I've seen strollers, women, men, trying to get to the beach, having a lot of difficulty trying to get down to the beach. Approximately 150 feet of boardwalk. I know the high school shops in the past have made boardwalks, DPW have made boardwalks. There's plenty of room for the, for a truck to go down there, DPW truck, along with a boardwalk there on the right side. So that's my concerns. Number one would be Marina Drive sidewalks, though, for safety reasons. Thank you.
All right, Bob, thank you, appreciate it. Always a pleasure hearing from you.
Good to hear from you. I'd like to thank Councilor O'Hara. I've been in contact with him recently, and he asked me to speak up, so.
Yep, great, did a good job.
I can remember when some of you guys used to be in pretty good shape, pretty good athletes, but those days over.
I'm still there, baby. I can take on anything.
You know, you always could.
Thanks, Bob, I'll see you, appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, take care, bye.
All right, up next, we have Ms. Palzola. Mrs. Palzola, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
57 Western Avenue, Gloucester, Mass.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I sent an email out to the city council and to the P and D committee, and one of my concerns turned out to be, after I sent everything out, that the CONCOM was meeting at the same time as the P and D committee. So something was worked out between the two groups, and they, the CONCOM changed their meeting back to the 21st. Turns out that the P and D meeting decided that they weren't going to vote that night, and they were going to go visit the site. Trouble is, is now we're back to the same position. Both groups are going to be mating, meeting at the same time. Now, I was told by Bell that, that CONCOM is only a, an advisory board, and we can watch it the next day. But the trouble is, is we like to speak at that meeting. So I'd like to make a comment that if there's any kind of chance that one of them could change their meetings or a different time so that we could see both of these, because they're both about the school. My comment is, I, I don't want to miss either. So, and there's going to be a lot spoken, I think, at both these meetings. That's my comment. So if there's anything you can do to make a change, whether it be at the timeframe that you have it, so that both groups can meet the same night, that would be great. I don't care about them changing their date, if they can do that. Thank you.
All right, we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Counselor, can I just, can I just comment on that?
Yes, Councilor Gilman, go ahead.
Thank you. So from a procedure standpoint, the mayor asked me to be in touch with Adrienne Lennon, which I was. She chairs, she's a city official that sits on CONCOM. And Adrienne assured us that they would not be taking up this matter at the meeting on the 21st. So it's a placeholder on the CONCOM agenda that she assured us would not be a conflict with our, it's not the 21st, I'm sorry, it's the ninth, it's, it's on May 19th. That's when P and D meets. They will not be taking this up at CONCOM on May 19th. So there will not be a conflict of people that want to attend both. So I, I copied the mayor on that so she could see it, because sometimes she gets the calls with people. And that was from Adrienne Lennon. So I just wanted to, to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, so we are still in oral communications. Is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you're watching on a device or a laptop or whatever you, your choice is, you can, there's a raise hand button to request to speak. Okay. Seeing none, all right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business was a presentation by Karen Carroll.
Um, yeah, I'll take it. So our health director, she is on leave at the moment. She reached out to us and asked us if she could postpone it for a couple of weeks, and I didn't see a problem with that. We all know what's going on, and we're all pretty updated with everything at this point. We're getting our updates from the mayor's office, and hopefully we're forwarding our updates from the mayor's office to our constituents. So Karen will be our next city council meeting with our citywide update, and hopefully she'll have some better news for us moving forward, where we can ease some restrictions. I don't know anything, I'm just, I'm hoping for the best, that's all. All right, so we'll have that in two weeks. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the confirmation of new appointments.
All right, our Chair of Ordnance Administration, Councilor Nolan.
All right, so we're going to start off with the Gloucester Archives Committee. The Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Beth Wayland to the Gloucester Archives Committee, term to expire 2/14/24, an ISO move.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor O'Hara. Is there any discussion? Anyone else? Okay, and Madam Clerk, may I have, who's the, who's the first role? Does it count? Is it, it's myself, is it?
It's Jen Holgrum.
Okay. Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Councilor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard is not with us. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
And Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Councilor Nolan.
The next one's going to be for the Gloucester Cultural Council. And the Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Arthur Thomas to Gloucester Cultural Council, term to expire 2/14/24, and also move.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor O'Hara. Is there any other discussion? Councilor Holmgren.
Yes, I would like to very much endorse this appointment, and I want to thank Arthur for his service. I believe he will be an asset to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Councilor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
And Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Councilor Nolan.
Up next, we have an appointment to the Historical Commission. The Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Ralph Pistorano, Pistoro, to the Historical Commission. Sorry if I didn't get that right. Term to expire 2/14/24.
Second.
Great, motions been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor O'Hara. Any Councilor discussion? Councilor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. I've worked closely with Ralph for the last seven years. He's been on the board and currently is president of the Lanesville Historical Commission, and he is just a pleasure to work with. He's easy to, to work with. He's good with follow-through. He's good with getting the community together, and I can't say enough good things about this election. So I, I am really excited to see him joining a total city board right now. And I think with your votes, you'll be very excited about his, his job. So thank you, Ralph, for, for signing up for this.
Great, thank you, Bell. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll call for the roll call. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
And Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Councilor Nolan, proceed.
Yet next to be for the Open Space and Recreation Committee, which is growing excellently. The Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Liam Anastasia Murphy to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, term to expire 2/14/24, and ISO move.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Any other Councilor discussion? So I just want to say that Liam has been a standout in our athletic program for Gloucester High School. So this is a perfect fit for him, and I only wish that I could run like him. Honestly, I don't know how some people run for miles and miles and miles, but anyway, we, we do have all the, the new appointments on the call this evening. I just want to let everybody know that they are in attendees, so they are with us this evening. But I think Liam's going to be a great fit for the Open Space Committee, so that's my two cents. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I will offer the, call for the roll call. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara. Oh, I'm sorry, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council O'Hara. Jamie, can you hear us? Are you froze?
Yeah, yes.
There we go. Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman. All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. And I think we're to the last one, Council Nolan.
Last one is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint James Gigolotti as an alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire 2/14/24, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Any other Councilor discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Thank you to all five for volunteering, and yes.
Absolutely. Councilor Nolan.
Yes, and thank you to all five.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Thank you to all five for volunteering, and thank you to Mayor Romeo Taken, who is on the call with us, for this excellent slate of nominees, and yes.
Thank you, Barry. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. And we do have our mayor on the, on the call this evening. Mayor Taken's here, and we do have our city auditor here, Kenny Costa. And let's see, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The consent agenda?
All right, are there any councilors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been moved by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Gilman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
And Council Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes to approve the consent agenda as written, is a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Is there anybody that we have, we do have a unanimous consent agenda this evening? Are there any councils that would like to remove anything off our unanimous consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve our unanimous consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Gilman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
And Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote for the unanimous consent agenda passes eight in favor, one absent. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of May 6th.
All right, I'm going to hand it over to our Budget and Finance Chair, Melissa Cox.
I provided a consent agenda for the things that we covered at the meeting. If anybody has anything they'd like to pull, please let me know.
Is anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, from Budget and Finance?
I moved the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Cox, seconded by Council McCarthy. Council Cox, any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, I will call for the roll. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes to approve the Budget and Finance unanimous consent agenda on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee report of May 3rd.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, back over to Council Nolan.
So we'll start off with the Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend pursuant to Chapter 5 of the Acts of 2021, that the city council evaluate and report on whether change in the Ward 1, Precinct 2 pole location from the Veterans Memorial School, 11 Webster Street to the Glenn T. McLeod Cape Town YMCA at 7 Crossing Road would have a disparate adverse impact on access to the poles on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income, or age, an ISO move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Any discussion? Council Pat and then Council Gilman.
Just a quick question. Does that read correctly as 7 Crossing Road, or should that be 7 Gloucester Crossing Road?
I'm not sure.
Madam Clerk, would you?
Joanne, could you, could you weigh in?
I think it might be, okay.
It is, it's 7 Gloucester Crossing Road.
Yes. I apologize for the incorrect address.
Sean, do you want to amend it to?
I, I will make an amendment to change it to 7 Gloucester Crossing Road. An ISO move.
Second.
All right, so on in the amendment for Gloucester Crossing Road, is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Council Holmgren on the amendment.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
And Council Gilman.
Yes.
All right, motion passes to amend, hold on one second, Bell. Motion passes to amend the motion on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Council Gilman on the main motion with the amendment now.
Thank you. I have a question, and I think that this should say would not have a disparate adverse impact on access. So I, I think we should have said that in the motion, and it's not on that.
Okay, Council Holmgren.
Would not have a disparate adverse impact is the way it should read.
Well.
A disparate adverse impact is not what we want. That's, so I, I think we need to amend it to add the word would not have a disparate adverse impact. So I'd like to amend the motion to add.
Hold on, Bell, before, God, you can do the amendment, and then we'll have the discussion after, God. You're right.
Okay, so I, I'd like to amend the motion to, so I, I think Council Holgrum understood what I said, so.
All right, so motion's been made to have the word "not" in front of the "have" in the last sentence, correct?
Yes.
Council Holmgren, so this is for, it's been, motion's been made by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holmgren, and now we're in the Council discussion. Council Holmgren.
So Council Gilman, to your point, I understand what you said, but reading, reading the motion, it does make sense, weather, changing it, wood, that does make sense. So I don't think we need to add "not" in there. It, it's just, it's a mouthful between weather and wood, but it does, it does read correctly grammatically.
Okay, any other counselors? Joanne, do you want to weigh in on this, whether it would have an effect, whether we put the word "not"?
So that motion is based on the motion that we did for Plum Cove School.
Okay.
Whether it would have.
So we've done this in past, past practice.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess if you go back to Council Holgrum's point, if you go back to the beginning of the paragraph, the weather would kind of change that. So, so I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
If someone would second that, that would be great.
Second, second.
Motion's been made to withdraw by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Cox and Council Holmgren. So on the withdrawal, so Council Holmgren. Withdrawal of the amendment.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
And Council Gilman.
Yes, thank you.
Motion to withdraw Council Gilman's amendment passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. I know the people on the attendees thinks, you know, we're, we're going above and beyond here, but this is, you know, we're putting laws into effect here, we're changing the ordinances, so we have to make sure we get this right, so we don't have to bring it back to council. So I'm just trying to explain to everything. So back to the main motion with Councilor Nolan's amendment, First Amendment. So before we vote, this is Council discussion part. I just want to give kudos to Council Cox for stepping up for this. I know Council Memhard, this is his ward, and he, he wanted to sponsor this. He sponsored this, but I just want to share a little sidebar with everybody. Council Cox and I were at the YMCA a couple of months ago for a tour before it opened, and she had mentioned to Tim, and I'm, and I don't know Tim's specific title, Melissa, what is it? Tim Flaherty.
Director.
He's the director of the YMCA, so she had mentioned this to Tim, and without batting an eyelash, Tim absolutely agreed to this. So I just want to give kudos to, to the, to Council Cox and the YMCA for bringing this forward and, and not hesitating not once to bring this forward for the polling places in the future. So thank you, Council Cox, and thank you to the YMCA for, for accepting this and making the transition for polling places a lot easier, so. All right, so back to the main motion with the amendments. Is anybody, everybody all set? All right, I will call for the roll call. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
And Council Gilman.
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, and one second. Council Nolan, go ahead, we got one more motion for this?
We do. The Ordnance and Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that pursuant to Mass General, to MGHC, 54. to MGHC fifty-four, subsection twenty-four, and section eight point six of the city charter, that the City Council vote to move the Ward One precinct to polling location from Veterans Memorial School, eleven Webster Street, to the Glenn T. McLeod Cape Town YMCA, and I'm gonna add in here, uh, seven Gloucester Crossing to make up for the other one, um, to become effective with the preliminary election on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in all future elections, and ISO move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Nolan correctly and seconded by Councilor O'Hara. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc? Yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
And Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, so that sums up our budget, our ordinance administration. Um, and before we go forward, we do have our Chairman of the School Committee, Jonathan Pope, on this evening. I see him on the attendees. Um, I just wanted to recognize him this evening also. All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee report of May fifth.
Council Gilman?
There are no items to report, but I just wanted to remind counselors, if you have not signed up for one of the site visits, please call me. And we also, um, walked around with notices for the abutters, and so far we have one abutter that is attending. So I just wanted to, um, just remind you to please reach out if you have not signed up. Um, we, we'd like to have the names because of contract tracing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing twenty-two, twenty-one dash zero, one, three, rezoning twenty-two, twenty-one dash zero, zero, two, to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, section five point two, four, accessory in-law dwelling units in associated definition in section six definitions in accordance with the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section one, eleven, two, parentheses, A.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and continue this until May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. So we're gonna push this out for a couple of weeks. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Public hearing twenty-two, twenty-one dash zero, one, four, whether the City of Gloucester should opt out of spraying activities conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter two fifty-two, section two, A.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Um, so once again, if you are calling in on a telephone or your, your cellphone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are calling, uh, if you're watching on a device or a computer, there's a raise hand button. So this is in favor. Is there anybody? And, and, and you can put your hand up. Everybody that's wants to call in, whether you're in favor or in opposition, you can put your hand up now, and you can state whether you're in favor or whether you're not in favor or in opposition, um, when you're recognized to speak. So, um, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? And is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? All right, so we have our first attendee, Patty. Can you hear me, Patty?
Hi, Steve.
Hi, name and address for the record, please.
Patty Page, three Title Cove Way.
Thank you, Patty, go ahead.
Hi, I didn't realize the format. I was hoping that, uh, Max Shank would come up first and explain what's in front of you tonight. So I'll say what I understand is uh, the Health Department forwarded two plans, Plan One and Plan Two. Um, I'd like to endorse the City Council to approve what I'll call Plan One, um, which I think is the preferred plan from the Health Department, um, that includes educational pieces and, um, you know, personal protections and I, I'm not even clear what other items are there, but it doesn't include any treatments. No pesticides, no chemicals. It's basically what we do now. We don't lose anything by taking this on. Um, the state, you know, legislation on this, you know, was broad stroked, and clearly it's not really a one-size-fits-all. You know, they try to provide, um, assets, you know, resources to us if needed. We don't have the need. We don't have the, the mosquito vector. Um, the, the disease-carrying mosquitoes here, mostly we have saltmush mosquitoes. Uh, it can happen. It hasn't happened. We have a remote risk in this area. So to ratchet it up at all seems a little counterintuitive from a, uh, an environmental standpoint, when, even when you talk about, uh, BTI dunks, which is in Plan Two, that can, that first of all includes, um, the hiring of a licensed professional. The city does not have anybody on staff that can do that. BTI often contains methoprine, which is the ingredient that kills the mosquito. But again, arthropoda, mosquitoes, lobsters, crabs, snails, they're all one and the same. So if you're gonna use, i- i- endorse anything that kills a mosquito, you are endangering the habit of your other aquatic life. That's ju- that's just factual. So I, I'd like to, you know, really strongly endorse the plan that, that does work for Gloucester now and should work in the future barring any real emergency that, um, we find a problem. So, there was a, um, large incident back in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand where New York was sprayed with, uh, these chemicals for mosquito spray. They lost a complete lobster industry down there. They lost a crab industry. Twenty-one years later, it's never recovered. There, you know, there was a payout by the pesticide company, a large payout, a hundred and twenty-five million, and that hu- that fifty million dollar industry never recovered down there. So it can be detrimental. So I just ask you to forward this with caution. Thank you. I see a run over. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Um, just so everybody knows, I did talks, talk to Max earlier, and I told him that, uh, he's here for some questions if he, if he, uh, wants to speak up for any council questions. All right, so we have, um, we have, uh, Gnome. Gnome, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Naomi Graham. I live at one Bickford Way. And I wanted to just add a little bit on to what Patty said in one hundred degree, hundred percent agreement in what she framed there for the two plans, and that if there were going to be a BTI dunk, um, element to our proposal to the state, because I do understand that they also can push back on, um, local plans if they don't feel that they have enough teeth to them. If there were to be that put into the plan, can we please design in very clear thresholds as to when that would be instated, you know, when that we would need to use the BTI dunks, and what controls we would be putting on the company who we hire to use it to mitigate as much damage as possible. Ideally, no pesticide use, but I do understand the position that you guys are in, um, in relationship with the state wanting to have, um, you know, something that they know is gonna kill back the mosquitoes carrying the triple E. So that's the only thing I would add, is that if we can draft something, obviously with the help of the, um, Board of Health or other um, groups, that there'd just be really clear language about how we're gonna use it if we are going to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Naomi. And I apologize, I apologize because, um, on your screen, it just says N-O-M-E, so.
Yeah, no worries.
I apologize. Thank you, Naomi. All right. Up next, we have Lisa. Lisa, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address for the record, please.
Lisa Riggsby, three Taylor Court, Gloucester. Um, well, first, I, I realized that this is all happening quickly. Um, Max Shank had a very short period of time to put the plans together. Um, if I understand, there are two plans. I've only seen Plan One without the BTI dunks, and, um, uh, I, I just want to say that in my communication with Max, I asked about the last time that he knew of on record that Gloucester had used a BTI dunk, and to his knowledge, it was like the early two thousands. I think he said, um, maybe two thousand and one, he didn't have anything. So it's been quite a while. We have clearly managed without using BTI dunks, and, um, the legislature that was passed last in June of last year kind of changed the, kind of flipped the the game, if you will, where now municipalities, cities and towns are forced to opt out rather than to opt in. And we haven't opted into a mosquito district. We haven't paid the subscription, if you will, services for that. And the, the plan that he outlines in, uh, the plan without the BTI dunks is clearly in alignment with a bill that is currently being tabled at past, uh, legislation. It's with the, um, Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture, which, um, is an act providing for public health by establishing an ecologically-based mosquito management program in the Commonwealth. It's expected to come to lawmakers next year. So he's actually outlined in Plan One, without the BTI dunks, the very measures that this bill is highlighting in what is currently passing through right now and being reviewed. So I think it would be a nice boon for Gloucester if, um, we show that we're proactive in a twenty-first century mosquito control management program that does not include this as, uh, an alternative, i.e. the BTI dunks. That's it.
All right, great job, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have our next caller. And we have Patty. Patty, can you hear me? Hello, Patty.
Come on.
Yep, I can hear you, Patty.
You can, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Name, name it. You didn't say anything wrong, so. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Patty Amaral, fourteen Myrtle Square.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I don't know much about this except for what Patty Page has told me, so I'm just not really, I just know this, that spraying anything, we have a circle of life, right? And so when we spray and we kill everything, we're killing all those things that you really need. You know, something about Neptune's harvest fertilizer, right? It's organic. It doesn't kill anything. We have to think about these things for our environment. And so, uh, please choose the option one. Um, um, those dunks sound horrible. Rachel Carson would be really upset right now with that. So, um, I hope you guys choose that, and thank you for your work on this, and I hope you choose option one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. All right, and up next, we have Brenda. Brenda, can you hear me? Hello, Brenda. So what happens during these public hearings sometimes is people leave their computer on and walk away to do a couple of other things. But the microphone. There we go. I knew, I knew you were there, and I knew you were listening. I just wanted to get your attention.
No, this is good. Thank you. Uh, Brenda, forty-three Rocky Neck Ave. I absolutely support opting out. I would vote for, uh, the first plan. And I, I concur with everything that Patty and Gnome and Lisa said, and thank you.
All right, Brenda. Awesome. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Uh, we have Ruth. Ruth, can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go. Name and address for the record, please.
Ruth Mordecai, four Terrace Lane in Gloucester.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for your work on this, and, um, definitely with number one, with no treatments and to stay as we are, and, uh, I, I appreciate hearing what the others had to say. And that's, that's it for me, but I'm, I'm hoping that we stayed with what we have and won.
Ruth, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the opt-out for the mosquitoes? All right. Going once. Speak in favor and opposition going twice. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, we received nineteen communications, um, in support, uh, to opt out, and one communication for, to, um, accept the Plan One. And I shared those communications with you in a Google Doc folder, so you've seen all the communication and who has submitted them.
All right, thank you, Joanne. All right, so now we're on the counselor questions part of it. Um, Barry's been itching with his finger, trigger finger for a little bit, so um, I'm gonna do Counselor Pat, Counselor Gilman, and then Counselor Holmgren.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, uh, to Counselor Cox, I think, for originally bringing this to everyone's attention when it first came out. Um, I spent quite a bit of time with, uh, Max Shank, uh, in Karen's absence, uh, trying to find out about, uh, um, all of this, uh, and how he was gonna come up with, you know, a planning recommendation, uh, which they, uh, he and the, uh, Conservation Commission have come up with, and including the alternatives, that does include the BTI dunks. Um, the, um, the current, uh, from my understanding, and Max can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, uh, e- even the current spraying, uh, as well as the, um, the, the dunks do not use some of the chemicals, uh, that say, uh, like, uh, Patty Page had referred to. Uh, I'm not trying to say that they're environmentally friendly at all, uh, but they are not the, uh, things that were used in, uh, some of these issues before. Um, I was.
Sorry, one, one thing, we're, we're, um, I don't want to cut you off. I know you're in a, in a moment. Um, we're just at counselor questions right now.
Okay, quick.
I don't want to get ahead of the game.
Question.
Discussion, that's all.
Okay, you know, questions, you mean to Max?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold off for the rest. You, just don't, don't erase it, because you know I go on for a while.
No, 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 I know. I just don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put the, the, the car before the horse just yet for counselor discussion. That'll come after the motion. All right, Counselor Gilman?
Um, I attended the Board of Health meeting, and the description that the Board of Health made, um, including Max, our Assistant Director of Public Health, um, was very helpful. So I was wondering if we could just ask him to give us a two-minute tutorial on what the recommendation was and for what reasons, because I think that that would be helpful, just for that little review before we vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Uh, Jen, would, do you have a question before we let Max speak? Well, maybe the, maybe he can answer this while your question also.
Yeah, um, I, I have a few questions, and I, I do want to thank, um, everyone for calling in and for emailing, and that really did make a difference.
Um, I also attended the Board of Health meeting and listened in. Um, I do, I have a couple of questions in regard to practicability, uh, specifically for, um, uh, uh, putting out to bid, um, uh, vendors, uh, who would be able to do, um, the opt-out, uh, to carry this out, and also, um, any, um, mandates, uh, for education and outreach. Um, I just, I want to make sure that we've got all of those ducks in a row. Um, and I am definitely, I, I will say I'm in favor of the opt-out one hundred percent, but I just, I want to know how, um, we can help the Board of Health and the Health Department do this. Uh, and, uh, so, thank you. I'll, I'll look forward to, uh, Max's, um, information.
All right, thank you, Jen. And before we get any more counselor questions, we'll let Max digest what we got in front of him for us before we pile any more on. Go ahead, Max.
So by way of background, probably is the best thing to do, uh, the previous speakers had, um, audience members had mentioned the fact that this uh, legislation was changed back in June or July, uh, allowing for the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board in cooperation with the State Department of Public Health to perform aerial spraying in times and areas where it felt it was a critical need for doing so. Uh, fast forward, uh, we knew nothing about this, and, uh, until a resident of West Fast forward, we knew nothing about this and until a resident of West Gloucester came to a Board of Health meeting, I think back in September and brought it to our attention more for the possibility that this legislation would provide for testing. I mean, that's the one thing we would like to know is, is what a snile virus in our community or not. And, or triple E or anything else for that matter. So I checked with the Northeast Mosquito Control District and one of their representatives, they said, no, it doesn't include that, but also I was told at that time that, oh, we wouldn't likely be, you know, affected by this because we're not an area where a great number of the vector mosquitoes for West Nile virus or arbor virus, you know, triple E, that sort of thing are around. So, you know, it's, don't worry, and basically don't worry about it. Everything will be fine. Fast forward and thanks to Counselor Cox and her getting my ear. We started looking into the fact that there is this opt-out option. As a matter of fact, unless you opt out, you are, your community risks being sprayed regardless of what you want. And so we started doing some fast research and I want to thank Patty Page and some others who helped provide some information that filled in some of the gaps. And lo and behold, so the mainstay, and this gets to Counselor Holmgren's some of her comments. The mainstay of this is actually the council's responsibility. So the council has to put forward a plan with their vote and certain stipulations within that vote to, in order to be able to opt out. They have changed the date. I don't know if counselors are aware of that. It was originally May 15th. Because of the pushback from communities about the lack of notice, they pushed it back to May 28th, so we have a little bit more time. But the, the request of the, of the plan is that the council develop a plan, put forward a plan with the consultation of the Board of Health, which has been done. We kind of did take the lead on this because we have more of the background on what the community has done in the past, so you know, the push was on. They have a form that needs to be filled out, so it's not like you create a form a plan and just launch it at them. They have a very strict form they want you to fill out and as to what you were going to do. Now, Counselor Gilman and all are very correct that in the past, by and large, the response of this community, even in times of heightened risk based on what's been going on in other communities around us, our response has been education, outreach, and that the best defense is an educated public. And by, and, you know, self-protection, so recommending sprays on individuals and, you know, limiting activities during certain times of, of the day and in certain locations. So that is essentially what we're putting forward. Now, the Department of Public Health, when it does do its, it has a, like a four-tiered system for alerts, when they alert people about West Nile, the risk of West Nile virus or triple E. And it starts off with low, then it goes to moderate, then it goes to high, then it goes to critical. Now, what the department has done and what the Board of Health has approved, and I'll explain that process a little bit in a second, is a response to each of those levels so that, let me just draw this up here if you excuse me just for one sec. So at the low level, at the start of the season, which is generally May, there's messages via city website and Health Department webpage, press releases to local media outlets to include information on how to prepare for and help prevent exposure to arbor virus. Then we get up to the moderate level of warnings, then it's all of the above, adding the following information, the use of mosquito netting on baby carriages and playpens and dumping standing water twice weekly. Now, it's a good practice to have, just by point of reference, if people are wondering what it takes for mosquitoes to breed, basically a bottle caps worth of water is enough for a mosquito to breed. So just keep that in mind when you're cleaning up your yard. Then it goes from moderate to high. So then again, we're escalating a little bit more based on the threat level. So we're all of the above, adding the following information, these, using the Smart 911 Alert System that we have as a method for informing public of increased risk and precautions. Public events and people over the age of 50 or those who are immune compromised should adjust outdoor activity to avoid peak mosquito hours from dusk to dawn. And public parks and open space areas should be posted with warning signs and/or closed from dusk to dawn. With that, which is something we have done in the past, so that's, you know, keeping again perfectly in line with past practice. Then it goes up to critical and critical would essentially be you have a West Nile virus or triple E case in an adjoining community. And it's been confirmed that triple E or West Nile virus containing mosquitoes are in the area. All the above. I'm sorry? Forgive me. Do you want me to continue?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay.
I think the mayor was on mute.
Okay.
For a split second.
So then next level being critical, all the above and situation-specific recommendations by the Mass Department of Public Health, the Health Department and the city administration, closure of public parks and open space areas from dusk to dawn. There are also some measures that we can take in terms of enforcement. So if we find that there are businesses that aren't doing good practices, you know, our first approach is always outreach. So businesses that usually automotive companies or dealerships and that sort of thing who have tires standing outside. It's a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes, I'm afraid. So we ask that they stack them in such a way that they won't collect water as a bare minimum. But if they, and if they don't, we can bring them before the Board of Health if necessary, but you know, looking at our records, I have Kelly Highland, our public health nurse, check our records for the last five years because that's required as part of this application. And there's never been a case, a human case of West Nile virus or triple E in the community in the last five years at minimum. I think it even goes beyond that. So we think it's a very measured approach. The board voted on this approach to approve it on their meeting of April 21st, excuse me, April 22nd. And the second plan, the one that folks seem to be a little bit concerned about, was put forward only to provide an option to the council. So it's completely up to the council what you want to do. If you want to opt out or not opt out, and if you do want to opt out, which plan you want to use, or if you want to come up with any other variations on the theme, that's all within your power right now. We would be more than happy to make whatever modifications to a plan that you see fit and provide whatever advice we could. But the use of dunks, and I understand people's concern, it is the least most effective but least harmful of all the options that are available to us, really. And so they have been used in the past by the Health Department back years ago when we had a mosquito control plan, I think they had mentioned, and I did the last reference to any mosquito control oversight by the department I can find is from 2001, but they did do it prior to that. And they did have a dunk program for certain catch bases in town. There was, there is kind of a confusion about methoprene and dunks. I understand, and I'm having a hard time finding the ingredient in actual physical dunks, being listed in those dunks. And I believe methoprene is normally sprayed. And so in this case in New York that was mentioned, it wasn't BTI, it was methoprene that was being sprayed and that did cause, cause the harm. And in situations where the BTI was used in combination with methoprene, I believe it was in a spray. So, but I can't confirm that, so, you know, don't take that to the bank just yet. I think people are absolutely right that if the council does choose and move forward with a option that includes the use of dunks, that all efforts be made to ensure that it doesn't include that and that or any other ingredient that may be harmful to the environment. To, back to Counselor Holmgren's question regarding the logistics of how to get somebody contracted and that sort of thing, I'm afraid. I really can't speak to that. I mean, we can help the DPW develop a scope of services and what should be included. But in terms of walking it through, you know, the process for purchasing and contracting, that's in their wheelhouse right now.
All right. Thank you, Max. Counselor Cox and then Counselor Holmgren.
Thank you, Max. In the application that we received in our packet on page four under larval mosquito control, we do have checked best professional judgment, but then we additional check of other and it states where the BTI dunks would be distributed. I would like to eliminate that altogether from our application, but I would like to know from you if we eliminated that and the comment section below on page four, where it says catch base and treatments also unchecked that if we were to send in the application with those unchecked and the other information removed and we strictly went on an education opt-out reason, what are the, what's the likelihood of it being rejected? Or do we just not know?
Well, to get to the first part of your question, there are two plans. One is an opt-out without any dunks, anything else. So you wouldn't, that plan, which is the one that was approved by the board, doesn't check those boxes and doesn't have the, that option integrated into it at all. It's the second plan that does. So you would just use the first plan as an example. Now, it is an excellent question. And will not having a you know, sort of alternative treatment plan in place affect the application? I, my suggestion, recommendation, I believe he is also in support was that the next thing to do would probably be to talk to our state legislators and gather their support to, for this plan and that it moves forward. I think that would be very helpful. I think I think they got a blowback on this that they weren't expecting whatsoever. And that everybody's kind of scrambling and realizing that maybe this isn't, wasn't the best way of approaching this. We should have maybe have had an opt-in versus an opt-out. That was mentioned. So I, I have a feeling if, if communities are willing to go through the process, and this is a lengthy process, and put a plan together that is fairly comprehensive and and is supported by the entire community, I think it would behoove them to, to let it go and to approve it. I'm sorry, I see Counselor Holmgren's hand going up. I just have German, half Italian. I'll keep going, people, so don't worry.
Yeah, Melissa's got the floor just now and then we'll go to get a counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Blank. The problem is that the, the packet, the information that we received in the packet is the application completed as if we were going to submit the, the BTI dunks as an alternate plan. So I just, I'd like to have the application redone without that information and if we're gonna go with Plan One, if that's the way the council votes tonight. It's just right now, this is the only public document that people are seeing and it has that as an option.
So I apologize. There were two provided to the administration for submission to the council, so both plans should have been provided. I'm not sure why both weren't.
Okay, maybe it's just out of order then. That's, that's fine. Thank you for your information. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Counselor Holmgren.
Thank you, Max. And I just, I, I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. So I agreed with Naomi Graham's point that we need to draft clear language if we do opt out and I also I want to make sure that we understand clearly, we need to do something if we do opt out or else we get fined. And I'm not sure if, even if we get the support of our state legislators, if it will be done, if that support will be solidified in time prior to us getting fined or not. So I, I just, I want to make sure that we're very cautious about this and I know you are too, and I appreciate all the work that's been done here, but I, I, I'm just hoping that we can work that out tonight if possible.
So forgive, I'm sorry, Counselor LeBlanc, can, can I respond?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, Max.
So I, I want to try and understand more clearly what it is that you're looking for. So you're saying that you believe the plan needs more definition or more trigger points for how things move forward or?
Yes, thank you. I, I, my, unless I'm misunderstanding, we need, we need something in place. We can't just opt out without an alternate plan or else there's a fine levied, unless I'm misunderstanding.
So that's what's before you this evening. That's the, that application is actually in fact the plan and that plan along with and you got laid out in, in a memo. The vote of the council, and there are several things that had to be included in that vote. And all that goes forward via email to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for their review. And so, and they have to approve it. And so that deadline, as I've said before, is May 28th at this point. So it's the plan, it's the vote of the council with all the bells and whistles that the state is requiring and all that goes forward and then we wait and see.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you, Max. Any other counselor questions, Counselor Pat?
Yes, question, question, Max. The, one of the things that, as I had discussed with you, is the question of whether the the Commonwealth would accept our plan if it's just the, you know, just the messaging and that type of a thing. And that's why I had to ask the questions about the, the BTI dunks as a backup, as an alternative. Could you answer the question for me? I've been trying to continue to check with different people, our legislators and that type of thing. I was concerned that if, you know, what if we didn't have a plan? So if, say that triple E or West Nile or some came here and we did not have that included in our plan. And I'm told that what would happen is if that did come here somehow, as, you know, as unlikely as that is, that the state would come in and do things automatically. Is that your understanding? And I was that regardless, even if we've opted out and our plan is our messaging and, you know, education and that type of thing, that if, for some reason it did come, that the state would probably step in and take action of some sort, whether that be, you know, whether that be spraying, whether it be dunks or any other thing, but would they probably step in anyway?
That's not my understanding and I've not heard that. If you have a resource for who gave you that information, I'd love to have a conversation with them about it because that's the first I've heard. All the language in the document basically goes back to you know, you need this time to be able to opt out so that this spring wouldn't be done. Now, the point of confusion may be coming from the fact that this is separate from being a participant in a mosquito control board or, excuse me, a participant with Northeast Mosquito Control District. So if you're part of the mosquito control district, you would actually still need to put in this application if, and Beverly is actually doing this. They are part of the Northeast Mosquito Control District. However, they're choosing the opt-out because they want to just rely on their mosquito control plan rather than having the state come in whenever they felt like it. Or based on their criteria, I shouldn't say that just because they feel like it. But based on their criteria to spray. So even if you are part of a mosquito control district, you still need to do this if you don't want that happen, that, that to happen. So maybe that's part of the confusion. So if you are part of a mosquito control district and don't opt out because you're very, well, we're part of the mosquito control district, we could possibly go wrong. This supersedes that, so it doesn't matter. So that may be where the miscommunication is coming from. There aren't that many communities in the Northeast that are not part of the district. I think Lawrence, Beverly, no, not Beverly, forgive me. Lawrence, Essex, Rockport and ourselves are the few communities that don't, aren't part of the district itself. So if the questions are going around, they may just automatically think that are the few communities that don't, aren't part of the district itself. So if the questions are going around, they may just automatically think that we're part of the district.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Cox, I apologize. I saw your hand up before Barry's.
Max, both applications are in there. They were just out of order. So my wanted to let you know that they were both included. With the deadline being moved, are they going to review the applications? Because even if we vote tonight, it's not a hundred percent guarantee that they're going to allow us to opt out. I mean, the likelihood is high. I get that. But are they going to notify us if we are denied? And then allow us to reconvene on the issue? Or is it just a denial and then we're in?
Excellent question. I haven't heard anything in terms of their time. I actually did send an email to, I think it was the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs asking that question and had never received a response. So I think it's worth asking again. It may be a good idea for the administration with their authority to maybe to possibly ask the question and find out what the answer is.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so we're still in council of questions part of this. My question is that, you know, seeing that the deadline has been pushed back, would it be best, and Max, I, I would like your opinion on this also. Would it be best that we pause for two weeks because our next council meeting is on the 25th? So we can get a little bit more clarification on this and continue this out to the 25th? And then possibly reconvene on this with some of these answers because I, I'd hate to vote this evening not knowing what the, what repercussions are of a fine or if we opt out and they don't accept our opt out and they just automatically opt us in. And I do agree with you, it should be an opt in program, not an opt out. So I mean, I, what, what would your thoughts? I mean, we can, we can take a straw poll as a council to, to push this back a little bit. But I'd like to, I mean, you heard some tough questions tonight, and I, and I just want to give kudos to all the callers this evening for being so educated on this and reaching out to our health department, department and actually helping them through this because I know it's a blurred line on some of the things that make us do. So would you feel more comfortable coming back in two weeks? So we have a solid answer and we can figure out what we want to do. Because I don't, I don't think I'm prepared to vote on this this evening. All right, Counselor Holmgren.
I'm with you, Mr. President. I, I think that it's probably a good idea to do just a little more research, just so that we are fully prepared. As far as the practicability of all of this goes. And Max, I really appreciate all the work that you've done thus far. This is, this is a tough one. So thank you.
Counselor Cox, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, if we're going to go with Plan One, which is just an educational aspect. And the fact that the deadline is the 28th, which we thought it was going to be the 15th, which is why we had the public hearing now. I don't see a reason to delay the vote on, on the option. It, it gives Board of Health time to compile the application with the necessary documents, submit it, and possibly even get some feedback. The questions that I've heard tonight that are unanswered are in regards to the BTI. And the, the ingredients in them and some of the, you know, ways in which we would contract to release the BTIs, which isn't in option one, which is to not use them at all. So I think in all fairness to the Board of Health, who has to compile and submit this document. If we are truly in favor of only using an educational aspect on this based on the recommendation from CONCOM and Board of Health, then we should proceed and allow the Board of Health the time that they need to submit the application. And the questions that we've had are in regards to the BTI and deployment, which we don't recommend using. I mean, that's what the going recommendation is.
So Max, do you submit this application or does it come through our council, through our clerk, or is this through the administration?
It, I believe it comes through the council of the administration. It's actually, you know, to be perfectly frank with you, I don't, it goes to an email address. So I don't think they're going to be checking the email address if we sent it. What's going to be the important part of it is the plan. The, the vote, you know, possibly a certificate of vote to indicate the fact that the council had fully met on this. And actually, I'll go over, forgive me, Counselor McCarthy, I'll just real fast. The vote should include the following, the date and time of the public meeting that the Board of Health was consulted, which obviously it has been. That public comment was allowed. Whether the municipality is opting out of all spraying or only certain spray activities such as aerial spraying. If a vote does not include that, it will, it is for a specific type of spraying. The vote will cover all spray activities conducted by State Reclamation Control Board. That the vote to opt out will only be honored if an alternative mosquito management plan is submitted and approved by the EEA. So, but all this gets forwarded to them all at once. And then we have to see, you're right, we have to sit and wait to see whether or not they approved the plan at all.
So a educational part of this only would be sufficient for an opt out?
It is the minimum requirement. So regardless of anything else that you plan on doing, whether it's dunks with, doing your own spraying or fogging or whatever you want to do. It bare minimum has to have an education and outreach component in order to be able to be passable.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. All right, Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, I was just going to say pretty much the same thing. Maybe we, after we close the questions and get into discussion, we have a better idea whether we have a consensus to go with the alternate plan, which is already in the packet and submitted. So and probably get it over and done with tonight.
Okay. Any other council questions? All right, we do have Patty Page has her hand up. We, Patty, unfortunately, we have passed the public hearing part of this. We're into the council of questions part of this, so I'm going to move forward. Counselor Cox?
I, we've gone through this for the last hour, I think. If there's a question to be had, we should take it up.
Okay. Well, any other objection? All right, we'll allow Patty to talk.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, chief. I did want to just address what I think it was Barry's concern, and, and it is a big concern. If there is an emergency, public health response required. The state will come in and conduct treatment. So you don't lose that. The opt out goes away, it's exempt. The only thing that would be exempt would be a certified organic farm in that instance. So we, we would be protected as a, from a public health standpoint. The state would see to that. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Patty. All right, any other council of questions? All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor, and actually, I'm going to hand this over to Counselor Cox.
Thank you. Because it didn't come out of a committee and I'd been working with Max and the Board of Health and CONCOM on it, I asked if I could read the motion. So I'm going to go ahead and read the motion and then maybe make some adjustments. In order to, so my motion, in order to comply with the requirements to opt out of the spraying activities conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board pursuant with Mass. General Law, Chapter 22, Section 2A. I move that on May 11th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, the City Council had held a public hearing on whether the city of Gloucester should opt out of spraying activities conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 252, Section 2A. That the City Council referred this matter to the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission for their recommendation on whether the city of Gloucester should opt out on spraying, of spraying activities conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 252, Section 2A. That the City Council allowed public comment. That the City Council accepts the Board of Health's Alternative Mosquito Management Plan. That the City Council accepts the Board of Health and Conservation Commission recommendations for the city to opt out of all mosquito control spraying conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board. That the City Council direct the Board of Health to submit the application for an altern, alternative management plan required for a municipality to opt out of spraying conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board by the deadline of Friday, May 28th. And I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor, is it Counselor Pat? Okay, Counselor Cox?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, the last, I apologize, the last item asks that the vote to opt out will only be honored if an alternative mosquito management plan is recognized. That the vote to opt out will only be honored if an alternative mosquito management plan is submitted and approved by the EEA. That has to be part of the vote, I'm afraid. It's just that there's a recognition by the council that that, that is the case.
All right, so hold on one second. We do have a motion and we do have a second. Joanne? Hold on, hold on, Melissa. Can we insert Max's language in this and one of us move it?
Well,
As an amendment, we're going to amend it.
Yeah. Yes.
So one of us wants to amendment, amend it and add Max's language to it. We'll take a vote on that part of it.
That's, I was going to move that. That's, I was reading it as it was written, but noticing that we had left out that piece. So I move what Max said.
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made to amend by Counselor Cox, seconded by Perry, 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 Perry Pat. I was going to call you Parrot, Perry Pat. Counselor Pat, to add Max's language to it. All right, so any other discussion on the, the amendment? All right, seeing none. So we're going to have to vote on the amendment. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara, I mean, Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara? We can't hear you, Jamie.
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, any other council of discussion? Counselor Cox? Amendments? All right, anybody else? Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All right, we have a motion. It's been amended. And it's been seconded, so I will call for the roll call. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara? I can't tell if James froze or, Jamie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
There we go. Thank you. Counselor Pat?
Thanks to Max for all the work on research and helping out and educating on this. Yes.
Thanks, Barry. Counselor Cox?
I would also like to thank the Board of Health, particularly Max, CONCOM, Adrian Lennon, and the City Clerk's Office, Joanne, for all the work that the three departments did with me on, in regards to getting this moving so quickly and getting it on the agenda and trying to meet the unrealistic deadline of the state from the May 15th deadline. So, yes.
Thank you, Melissa, and Counselor Gilman.
Yes, thank you.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Max, thanks again. Counselor Cox?
I'd like to offer a reconsideration just so we can get the certificate of vote to them as soon as possible.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Pat for reconsideration. All right, everybody remember the rules on a reconsideration? All right, Counselor Holmgren?
No.
Counselor LeBlank, every time I do this, I want to do the Bob, why not? But I'm not going to do it. No.
Too late.
I know. You always said yes. I don't, so I don't see. Counselor McCarthy?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Pat?
No.
And Counselor Gilman?
No.
All right, I'm sorry, Counselor Cox?
No.
All right, motion passes to, not, not to reconsider, passes on a roll call vote in favor of one absent. So Bob, a little backstory, Melissa Matten remembers Bob, every time a reconsideration, he would always vote against it. And no matter what it was. So, all right, great job. Thanks, Max. I appreciate it. And I'm sure
Thank you, counselors. Thank you all.
All right, so Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is other business for discussion only. The City Council discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings.
All right, so I don't know if we want to continue this to the next meeting because we are going to have our update on our COVID restrictions. So maybe we should continue this out for another week to see what a public health agent has to say. Counselor Cox?
The, the next step in the governor's guidance and release of restrictions isn't until May 29th. So it might be more prudent to take it up in June.
Okay. But I know we have to work with the administration on opening up one of the buildings that would be large enough to house, you know, we can't have a public meeting without having enough people to be in there or it'll be a, a open meeting violation. And I know we have to get some staff on there. So I know there's a lot of moving parts to this, but so why don't we continue this? Oh, Joanne, can we continue this out to our first meeting in June?
Yes, June 8th.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right, we're, we're in no rush to get back into, into session. You know, we've been chugging right along doing this, but we do need to open up the discussion at some point on whether we're going to start doing this or not. So we'll put it on the back burner for a little bit. Like I said, there's no rush. All right, any others, any, anything else from counselors? Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Counsel request to the mayor.
All right, we're going to start off with Counselor Pat.
All set, thank you.
All right, well, Counselor McCarthy?
Nothing for the mayor. Counselor Cox thanked everybody but herself. She did a lot of work on the mosquito control. I think she should be acknowledged also.
Yes, sir, she did. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. All right, Counselor O'Hara?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Nolan?
Want to thank generous gardeners, the administration, the DPW. All our gardens are looking fantastic.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Sean. Counselor Holmgren?
Thank you. I do, I want to thank Max and Counselor Cox, and I also want to thank Adrian Lennon, certainly, and the Conservation Commission. I also definitely want to extend my thanks to Mike Hale and to Nicole Keizer and to Krista Karanza for all of their work as well on the opt out program. And I also do want to acknowledge, as I do every year, last week was not only Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Appreciation Week, but it was Municipal Clerk Appreciation Week. So thank you, Joanne, and the entire City Clerk's Office and all the clerks in our fair city. We could not do that with, do anything without you. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right, Counselor Cox?
No requests to the mayor, but I do have a statement that I'd like to say.
Go ahead.
On March 1st, I made an inappropriate remark to Counselor Holmgren, and 11 seconds after that remark, waiting for everyone to stop talking, I apologized. Unfortunately, people were still talking, and apparently Counselor Holmgren did not hear my apology. So I would like to take this opportunity to apologize again for my poor choice of words, and I am sorry.
Thank you, Melissa, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Cox, I appreciate your apology.
Thank you. All right, uh, Counsel Gilman?
So I wanted to echo what Counsel Holgren said in terms of thank you for everybody, and also a kudo to my constituent Patty Page, who also helped the Board of Health um, go through this and and did it in a very diplomatic and helpful way, so team, good work. I wanted to just commend the administration and community development, the mayor's office, for the foresight to have had our council approve the zoning flexibility downtown during this pandemic, because as I drove down Main Street yesterday and saw even now Tonos has come up with some outdoor dining in front, it was just reassuring to see that all of our businesses had a jumpstart on making sure that all these provisions are there as they open up their businesses this spring all the way to the end of the year, and it was just a really good feeling to know that um, we all worked together to plan this and to help our businesses in every way possible. So I just wanted to make that comment, so thank you, good job.
Thank you, Bill. Um, and uh, I don't have any requests to the mayor. Um, thanks, Joanne, for everything that you do for our clerks and also the clerk's office. And uh, shout out to Mike Hale, our DPW director. Um, I know we've been in the trenches for a long time with the roads, and we've all heard how bad some of them are being dug up, uh, but we are seeing some of them being repaved again, which is nice. Um, so hopefully we can get this ahead of the curve before our our summer months and uh, do what we have to do, and uh, also we had um, our our Mr. Rowland at the beginning of the uh, oral communication, so one of us may, or one of our artists, at-large counselors, may want to reach out to the DPW and see what's going on over there on Marina Drive to to help them out, because I know that's a, the part of the beach area, so. Um, but shout out to everyone tonight, great meeting, everyone. Um, we got through it, was uh, Max, same thing, thank you. I know the mosquito thing is a big, a big to-do for some of us. Um, little fun fact for you, just so everybody knows, cedar oil repels mosquitoes, ticks, and fleas. It's an all-natural substance, and what you can do is mix it with some water. What I do is I I put mine in like a little spritz bottle, and I shake it up, I can spray it over me, over my clothes, doesn't leave any stains, it smells remarkable. Um, I put it in a garden sprayer, and I spray it all over my lawn and over my trees and my shrubs and keeps the the ticks and fleas and mosquitoes away.
Additionally, if you are, have like a patio or your yard or whatever, eel grass. Um, simple, um, uh, simple thing, easy to maintain, and eel grass does a tremendous job at repelling mosquitoes.
There you go.
So if you put them in a perimeter around a deck or something like that, it's all you need to do.
We have our own opt-out. Sean, did you have something to say?
Yeah, and the best cedar oil available is made right at Neptune's Harvest locally. It's unbelievable. You can get it at most of the hardware stores and garden center. And uh, it works well for your dogs and for yourself.
There you go, so go get yourself some cedar oil, everybody. Um, all right, with with nothing else being said, I will uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
All right, Joanne, you can take a stab at whoever you want to put down in the minutes for that one. All right, uh, Counsel, Counsel Holgren?
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes, good night.
Counsel Noone?
Yes, good night, everybody.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes, thank you to our um, city clerk and the staff, yes.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Cox?
Yes.
And good job tonight, Melissa, that was a lot of heavy lifting for you, and Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
My pleasure.
All right, motion passes, we're, motion passes to adjourn, roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Good night, everyone.